...of Bartlett Committee of the whole meeting for March 15, 2016. I call the meeting to order and ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Trustee Erins?
Here.
Cameron?
Here.
Crabbe Nero?
Here.
Danny?
Here.
Hopkins?
Here.
Ranky?
Here.
President Wallace?
Here. First item we have this evening is under planning and zoning, but we do have, it's my understanding that one of the items has been removed.
That's correct. The folks from Exeter asked that we hold off on their plan for a little bit. As you'll recall, this is a spec building, a rather large one, and in the last few weeks they've been approached by several businesses who would like to go in but would like to have it sized a little differently, a little larger, have it sort of a made-to-order kind of building, and they want to look at that option and will be back hopefully shortly on this agenda.
Very good. Hundred and forty thousand square feet, is it?
It's two hundred and forty.
Hundred and forty.
What is it?
Four hundred and twenty-one.
Four hundred and twenty. Excuse me.
That's amazing.
And they are thinking about making it a little bigger.
Okay. So that would be stricken on. With that being said, I will turn it over to Chairman Ranky of planning and zoning.
Okay. So we have only one item remaining, the Active Transportation Alliance Kickstand Classic Bike Race. So with that, I'll turn it over to the staff.
Thank you. We have three people from Active Transit here tonight that are going to talk about their firm first and foremost and talk about the Kickstand Classic, and we can go through some of the details. Let me introduce Ron Burke. He's the executive director. Ron, if you want to speak up here at this microphone. And also in the audience, we have Claire McDermott, who is in charge of marketing and events director, and Rachel Gunderson, who is the senior manager of events. We had these three folks out here several weeks ago, and we met with staff and the mayor and went through what they think we ought to be doing and why they picked us, which is a wonderful story, and what kind of a plan they have and we should have. And so we would love to hear it. Go ahead, Ron.
Great. Can you hear me okay? Is this good? I just want to make sure I'm, yes, awesome. So once again, my name is Ron Burke. I'm the executive director with the Active Transportation Alliance, and we're so glad to be here to talk to you a little bit about our proposal to work with you, village staff and the police department, who have been just fantastic, incredible to work with so far, about our proposal to do really a very unique new bike ride, a bike race actually, that we're for the time being calling the Kickstand Classic. Before I get into the details of that, I'd like to just tell you a little bit about the Active Transportation Alliance, who we are, and then I'll discuss in a little more detail the proposal on the table, if that's okay. But let me, before I get into this, so let me just say once again how we did actually get to be here, right? So when we put the proposal out, we actually put out, sent an email out to suburbs all around the region saying, "We're interested in doing a new bike race. Is anybody interested? Here's, you know, here's what we're thinking about." And we heard from a number of communities, but no one, no community was as enthusiastic and really as professional and as good to work with really as the good folks here in Bartlett. So it's one of the reasons we're here this evening. And also, when I mentioned to a few of my colleagues and folks that we interact with, especially people who are really active in the cycling community, and we said, "Well, we're looking in Bartlett." They're like, "Oh, Bartlett. We love to ride out there in Bartlett. It's awesome. Isn't that where Terry's Bike Shop is?" Everybody knows Terry, people who like to bike. And that was another draw, actually, knowing that great staff, local folks here who really believe in cycling and who would be excited about this type of bike ride. So I'm going to get into the details about that in just a second, but let me tell you a little bit about us. So we've been around since 1985, what used to be called the Chicagoland Bicycle Federation. We expanded our mission to walking and transit back in 2008, and the name changed at that time to Active Transportation Alliance. So we're really the region's not-for-profit charitable voice for better biking, walking, and transit. And we do that throughout the Chicago region, so not just in the city of Chicago. We do a lot of work in the suburbs. In fact, we worked on the Wayne Township Bike Plan, as mentioned earlier, and I'll talk a little bit more about that later. We have 7,000 members, 20,000-plus supporters all throughout the Chicago region, 33 full-time staff. So this is our mission. I mentioned that already, but it's, you know, biking, walking, and transit isn't just about getting from point A to point B, right? We know the communities that really facilitate this type of transportation tend to be healthier, more sustainable, kind of vibrant places to be. And this is not to the exclusion of cars. We're not anti-car, but we're very pro-bike-walk transit, and we'd like to see more biking, walking, and transit. In fact, that's one of our overarching goals at Active Trans, is to get to the point where about half, now this is a long-term goal, keep in mind, but where about half of all trips in the Chicago region are made on foot, on bike, on transit combined, right? So that means about half would be made by cars. Now today, the numbers are much lower. Today about, in the Chicago region, about one out of four trips are made by bike-walk and transit. In city Chicago, it's a higher number, as you might expect. So this is a long-term goal for us, but it is something to shoot for. We also have a safety goal. We really prioritize safety. We want to see far fewer crashes of all kinds on our streets, right? Be that car, people walking, people biking. So safety and encouraging biking, walking, and transit is really what we're all about. And I'm kind of touching on that already. We do that through trying to improve the infrastructure throughout the region, so better bike lanes, better trails, better bus routes, more metro trains running more frequently. We also work on building a movement, trying to really connect with people all throughout the Chicago region who care about bike-walk transit. And we do that through our events, like the one we're here to talk about tonight, through Bike to Drive, which is probably our best-known event, connecting with people online and so forth. And I mentioned the safety focus we, for example, are working right now to, at the local level with cities all around the region, to improve some of the more dangerous intersections in the Chicago region where we're seeing a lot of crashes happening. So we're working with the cities and the state to try to redesign those intersections so that there's fewer crashes. That's just an example of what we do. Our funds come from events like Bike to Drive, individual donations, foundation grants. We also do a lot of contracts. I mentioned that before, whether that's the Wayne Township. So we have professional transportation planners on staff. We've actually worked now more than, we've had contracts with more than 100 suburbs in the Chicago region over the years, doing bike plans, safe routes to school plans, complete streets policies, and that's really one of the most successful ways we've worked in the suburbs, is partnering with towns that really want to improve in these areas. So as I mentioned, we do planning consulting services. Advocacy and policy is maybe what we're best known for, so we work with politicians to try to encourage them, to support funding for biking, walking, and transit. We have our events that I mentioned before, a lot of communications and media. In fact, before we leave here tonight, we'll give you all a copy of our quarterly newsletter so you can check that out. We're often called upon by the press to comment on issues of the day, dealing with often bicycling. I often comment that bicycling is 2% of the trips, but 98% of the comments that we get as an organization, and it's kind of one of the unique things about cycling is that it really draws a lot of attention to itself, and that's, can be good and bad. I can guarantee you that. So development, obviously, we do fundraising through our membership, through grants and foundation grants and so forth, and we do a lot of education programs. We have something, for example, called the Kids on Wheels Program, where we have fleets of, we have a trailer, trailers full of kid-sized bikes that we basically take around to schools and park districts and do on-bike education in the schools and park districts. That's a lot of fun. We do adult bike education as well. And we run a crash support hotline for people who've been unfortunately stricken in a crash, specifically for people who are hurt while walking or biking. Right now, we're working on, I mentioned already, the, our safe crossings work, trying to improve some of the more dangerous intersections. I won't touch on all of these, but the Bike Ways for All is all about creating comfortable, safe places to bike. We know that the average person is not comfortable riding a bike on a typical street. This is just the reality we live in today. And there's people in this room, Terry, myself, you know, we're confident cyclists, right? We can bike anywhere. Most people aren't like that. We know that. Most people are, and understandably so. Like you, I always say that you don't learn to ski on the black diamond slopes, right? You learn to ski on the bunny slopes, and then you work your way up. And the typical suburban street is kind of like a black diamond slope for a lot of people when it comes to being on a bike. This is why trails are so popular, right? So our Bike Ways for All vision is all about trying to create safer spaces for people to bike, protected bike lanes, trails, side-street bike routes. This is where more people feel comfortable riding their bikes, right? We work on public transportation. We're working with Cook County right now to try to increase their funding for transit, which is needless to say a tough sell, given their financial problems, but we're working on it, doing some work on the Lakefront Trail in Chicago. So there's a lot going on. I won't dwell on this. I want to turn the page and really talk to you a little bit about the Kickstand Classic and our proposal for you, but before we do that, we'd like to show you, if it's ready, a little video about MB Bike to Drive, which I hope will give you a sense for, many of you, or I should say, most of you, I hope, are familiar with that ride. Maybe some of you have done it, but I want to give you just a sense for the kind of bike rides that we do and our ability to execute a good bike ride. So if it's ready, great. All right, thanks.
Well, he's getting it going. The Bike to Drive is, begins and ends where again?
Sure, so MB Bike, sure. MB Bike to Drive is on Lake Shore Drive, so there's one day a year that Lake Shore Drive has zero cars and all bikes, and that's for our ride. It's always the Sunday of Memorial Day weekend. This will be our 15th time doing Bike to Drive. We average around 20, 21,000 people who do it. Now, by the way, we're not planning for that many people for the Kickstand Classic, just don't get, don't be too, don't be alarmed. But so Lake Shore Drive is closed from end to end.
Only 10, right? At 10,000 or so?
I don't know about that. That's probably too many, too. So we have, the road is essentially closed from roughly 5:30 to 10:30 in the morning. We have rest stops at either end, a big festival in the middle, Grant Park where the riders start and stop. It's really one of those iconic experiences. We've, most of us have probably, you know, driven down Lake Shore Drive, but to ride your bike on is like a completely different experience, in part because it's so quiet. You don't necessarily realize how loud thousands and thousands of cars can be until they're not there. And all you hear during Bike to Drive is just the wheels turning and the birds chirping and the waves, like, it's great. You've got the lake on one side and the skyline on the other. It's a pretty amazing experience, so. And a lot of people use Bike to Drive as their kickoff for their cycling season. There's some of us in the room who bike year-round, but for a lot of people, it's kind of spring through fall, right? And Bike to Drive is often the time when people pull those bikes out of the garage, they take them to Terry's shop and say, "Terry, I need you to tune up my bike because I'm doing Bike to Drive in a week, and my tires are flat and my chain's rusty, so he takes care of it."
Well, it, well, it looks like we're having some technical difficulties. Why don't we fast forward to the Kickstand Classic, which I'm very excited about?
Yeah, yeah.
So I have a couple of questions, but I was hoping that maybe you could kind of introduce what the plan is for the community, and then I have some, some questions for the police department, and I know we have questions and comments as well.
Yeah, okay. So the basic concept is this. We know that, you probably noticed this in Bartlett as well, cycling is really growing and popular. More and more people are biking. Maybe many, many years ago, the only, most of the folks who biked were kids and the so-called mammals. Was it Steven? Was that your name? Oh, sorry. You know, it was like the older gentleman in Lycra and the kids. And, you know, that is just not the case today. People of all ages, all stripes are now biking, and so there's more and more interest in finding new ways to bike, new experiences, right? We also know that bike racing is something that, for the most part, is limited to the elite cyclists, people who have really expensive bikes and train all the time, and we were thinking, geez, you go back to the 1970s during the running boom, right? Back then, a lot of people started to run, but none of them were racing. The only people racing were the elite runners, right? Well, that needless to say has changed, right? Every weekend, spring through fall in the Chicago area, there's at least five or six 5Ks, right? People are running, doing running races in huge numbers today, and we were thinking, I wonder if we gave cyclists a safe space where they're not racing with all those hardcore cyclists, but just more average people, kind of like a 5K running race, would they want to do that? And we think the answer is yes. Now, let me say two things about that. Number one, no one's really done this before. So this, big caveat, it's both good and a little scary. I'll just be honest with you. It's good in that we're really on the forefront of something new here. It's exciting, right? I think it's exciting, needless to say. It's also a little scary. We don't know how, what the numbers are going to be. We really don't. I'm pretty, I'm very optimistic, actually, that we're going to get a good turnout, because people love to ride their bikes in a car-free environment, and that's what we've been working with the village staff and the police department on to create, is this car-free course that I think a lot of people are going to really be excited about and want to see, geez, how fast can I go? I wonder how fast I can go. The plan is to have them chip time, which is an electronic timing system where they'll not only get their overall time but also their splits. They'll be placed into age group rankings. We're going to have a little festival at the end where they can get a drink, have some food, hang out, some music. We think it's going to be an event that brings a lot of people to Bartlett who have not been here before. We're going to have a great time and leave Bartlett with a really strong impression, good impression of the town, and they will have had a great time. So that's it in a nutshell.
I hope there's only 350 in, between the 58 age bracket, that way I'll get a bronze.
Yeah. You're looking for a low turnout so you can get a medal.
Yeah, I want a medal.
So we're interested.
Okay. Yeah, we'll just fire this up real quickly. Just a minute and a half. So there you go. That is one of the largest organized bike rides in the country, and I think we're on the cusp of doing one of the first bike rides of its kind in the country here in Bartlett, so we're excited about it.
How many miles is the Bike to Drive?
From end to end, it's 15 miles from end to end. You can, you know, you can obviously go down and come back, and like one complete loop would be 30 miles. Now, a lot of people, especially folks with kids, they're not planning to go 30 miles. They're going to maybe start in Grant Park, go down to the museum and science and industry where we have a great rest stop. They're in the grass, they hang out, have some cookies and a banana and a drink, have a little picnic, you know, turn around and come back, and then have a lot of fun at the festival area. But some people, on their hand, try to get there early and see how far they can go, right? And they're, they're going to, they're going to zip around. We have folks of all stripes, and I think you'd see a similar crowd with the Kickstand Classic. We're envisioning folks going out in waves, kind of based on their ability and time, estimated time, so that we have people of similar speeds and abilities, you know, going out together. We're thinking of spacing the starting so that not everyone's going out at the same time to minimize the risk of collisions. We can do this with chip timing. It's not a problem. Triathlons do it already. At a triathlon, you may have noticed, they may send folks out in groups of 50, right? 50 go, and then a few minutes later, another 50. So you kind of get the spacing, because it's chip time, you can do that. You don't need to send everybody out at the same time.
I still got ran over in the water.
Yeah, I have too. Yeah. Well, they're getting better at that. They're actually creating smaller and smaller groups because they know people hate that. It's scary, isn't it?
Well, I think we have a, we have a great sense of your experience, looking at the financials. You definitely have the economic wherewithal, the knowledge base. So I guess then my next question goes to the police department and deputy chief in particular. What do you see as some of the challenges here? Have we reached out to these folks over on Shady Lane, things of that nature?
We have not begun communication yet. That'll be the next phase with board approval. We haven't gone out publicly at this at all. Internally, we've worked on it for now for the feasibility study, and we're confident we can pull that off and communicate well with the community, talk to individual neighborhoods, a few individual entities, whether it be a church or a neighborhood. We're very confident we can pull this off for you, but we, but the answer is no, we haven't done it yet.
Okay. So you're looking for comments from the staff as to whether or not we should proceed?
Comments from us.
Looking for comments from the board.
I'm sorry, from the board.
Yes, and we'll have, assuming that the board directs us to continue, we have a contract with Active Trans that we're finishing up, and we would bring to the board for final approval. One of our goals when we started this was to make sure that if this is going to be on a Sunday, that we have enough openings and police and people matting those openings and enough communication so that no one gets stuck very long at all. My, you know, my goal was just a couple of minutes at the most. This is the, hopefully, the first of many of these, but if a lot of people complain, it will be not repeated. So I, that was my first priority, is that the residents of this community are not inconvenienced in terms of where they want to go on that Sunday. So maybe I'd ask Pat to go through, we have the police department and some of my staff and community development that sort of make the core team of putting this together, and talk about how we came up with the course and how we intend to staff it and some of the other issues relative to our early planning process.
Okay, so since we started looking at this, we came up with two different options. The option that's up there right now is the first option. The start would be right downtown, outside the Village Hall, and go south on South Bartlett Road, go east on Sterns Road, go north on Newport, and then back around on Devon, unless we decided to switch it to go the other way so that, because we were debating about where the finish would be, and we thought it would be nice if people finished out here, that it would kind of be a festival atmosphere where everybody could end up, and I think that would wind up reversing, actually reversing the course. Wasn't that right, Ron?
So, yeah, I think that needs a little more.
So either way, we decide which way it'll flow. This, this is one option for the course. One of the main challenges with this course is the church that's on Sterns Road. They have a couple of services on Sunday, and as you can see, nobody would be able to get into or out of the church if this course were approved. So we came up with one other option to kind of get around that the best we could, and that is to take that eastbound leg from Sterns, east, and go north on Chippendale instead of going all the way down to Newport, and then at least any cars could access the church if they were to come in from the west to the east via County Farm Road. So that would still allow access into and out of the church for the services. It would be a little inconvenient because people may have to go around, but we've come up with detour routes in order to get people around the race in the event we need to. For all of the homes that are inside the course, we're coming up with detour routes for those people as well. The main detour route will be to send people north on Prospect, to get people out of their neighborhoods that way. We expect maybe about 30 or so police officers to staff some of the main entrances and exits from the subdivisions where we expect problems. If you look at Newport Boulevard, the green area to the east of Newport is a little bit of a challenge because the only spots that the people that live in those areas have to get out of are onto Newport Boulevard. So we would send everybody coming out of there north on Newport and then go east on East Devon to get out. So it'd be a two-way traffic flow right there in order to get people in and out of that subdivision.
It's worth mentioning that we're talking about a Sunday morning. That's probably obvious at this point, but just to be clear, right?
(inaudible)
Basically, the more time you have, the better. But at the same time, you obviously need the president's (inaudible).
I think typical events, when does the Lions Dash start? 7:30, I think?
It's pretty early.
Typical road races are around 7:30 in the morning, 7:00 or 7:00. I know the marathon goes up at 7:00 downtown.
Yeah, yeah, they're generally, that's 7:00 to 8:00 start time.
And you got to figure, we'll estimate a X number of people, and then we can kind of get an idea of how long it'll take to get them all out there on the course.
Yeah, this is a little, we're not going to be able to put as many people on the course at one time, needless to say, with bikes, supposed if they were running. I mean, we could do, you know, thousands and thousands of people, but at once, we're not going to be able to do that. We need a little more space, a little more spacing.
I think it would be wise to do the upper level of, if you're bracketing it, like the more experienced, faster riders early on, very first thing in the morning, and get them off the course, and then rookies like me can come.
We're thinking the same thing.
So Pat, as far as the circuit goes, we might have been told mileage-wise, but do you have the mileage for the different?
It's 4.8 for the big one and 4.1, if you look on the, it's hard to read, Mike.
Yeah, I didn't see it on the back.
There's little logos up here. 4.17 if you cut off the church.
Who are you looking at?
4.17, the very top thing. 4.17 is the loop, and then the longer one is 4.8 miles.
All right. So.
The idea is to do multiple.
But we don't have a set amount of multiple loops yet.
Four, probably, four, five, four, probably.
We're thinking that four to five, that would be ideal in terms of, we think, to make it not so short that it seems too easy.
Right.
But not too long that it's too hard, right? You try to find that goal line, sort of, you know, just right.
20 to 25 miles.
Right. I don't think you, there was an answer. I don't think you were capable of giving us an answer because it's dependent upon the number of riders, but just based on your experience, typically, how long would some, something like this last? Can you just, a rough estimate?
You mean for individual rider or for the overall event?
The event. Both, both. I've never done it before.
Six to noon window, during which, you know, riders.
I'm sorry?
Six to noon.
Thank you.
Would be the overall time, right? And then any one rider is not going to take six hours.
Right.
We have several sound waves, probably the fastest would be maybe, the leads might be 45, 50 minutes. The average person is probably going to be more than an hour and a half.
I'd have to pack an overnight bag.
That's okay. Well, we've contemplated maybe we want to have two or three loop options as well, for those who maybe don't want to go, four to five. These are things we're still discussing, but we didn't want to get frankly too far in the first row. Obviously, you need to sign off on this, and we want to make sure that we're, you know, really getting all the information.
We just had our strategic, strategic planning meeting on Saturday, and we talked about this, and I was very, very excited about this. I'm really not into biking, but my son is, and anyway, when I showed it to my wife, she was also excited about it. So what we decided to do is get a bicycle for two, and I'm going to let her pedal.
Good idea. Ray, Ray, I would, I recommend a rickshaw.
She could run, no ride.
How would you, how would you rate those two on that bike? Because they would be different ages, and would they be required to wear?
You add up their ages and divide by two.
Would they have to wear the same Lycra color?
That's a good question. We actually talked about having a tandem motor.
Well, do a bike with the oxygen on the side. I was talking about mine, Ray.
Oh, boy. We can always speed it up by having one group go one way and the other the other.
Great idea.
Could you imagine me getting into those tight clothing that you talked about earlier? You talked about it, the clothing?
Might talk a little bit about the volunteers. We certainly will generate volunteers from our service groups, but you also said you bring volunteers as well, so.
Absolutely, yeah. And by the way, I'm sure Terry could find some nice clothes for you to wear, but we have about a thou, how many volunteers do Bike to Drive? 700. So needless to say, that So needless to say, that's a big undertaking. So we, we're, we're pretty good at recruiting volunteers. We think we'll be able to bring quite a few. I know there's some folks here in the community who are already interested in helping to secure volunteers, so I think we'll be able to, that's really something that in the agreement that we've already drafted with the village, that's something that we're going to provide, volunteers. Now, obviously, we would love to have help from anyone local, or to the extent that the village government can help with that too, but we'll, we'll be sure to do that.
So if, if you commit to a time, so let's say the 6:00 AM to noon, is that something you're going to be able to fulfill? Because I guess that's one of my big concerns, is, okay, because if we tell the residents that the race is from 6 till noon, it's from 6 till noon, and then we're done, so everybody can plan their.
There's those few stragglers coming around.
Right, I mean, that's not safe for them, it's not safe for the residents, it's an inconvenience thing, and then long-term, that that's problematic.
Yeah, we have the same, the exact same situation with MB Bike to Drive, where the road is going to reopen to cars, and the city of Chicago and the police department, you know, we've got a very hard and fast deadline. So what we do with MB Bike to Drive is folks are just moved off the road, and they go over to the lakefront trail. So we'll have to have something similar here. My expectation is that we'll be sending folks out in waves that we shouldn't, we shouldn't have many, if at all, who are still out there stragg, like maybe if somebody had a flat tire, you know, but we could just move them off to the side and, and take care of them with a sag wagon or something like that.
Well, we could actually, even if that were the case, we could have some, the police department pick up.
Absolutely. That's the plan. We'll have police all around the course. As it gets closer to the ending, we'll have spotters driving around the course, and the beauty of the course, the beauty of the course design is it's got the bike path all around it, so we can just move them up onto the bike path.
Yeah, shouldn't be a problem. And we, we often, in our rides, we usually have volunteers that do that as well, who are coming up behind, if you have a problem, your chain is in the, awry, or your tire's gone flat, or you're just struggling, you know, we can help you get back to the start line.
It sounds, it sounds excellent. I, I think that maybe what Spin Doctors is going to have some people out there with repair kits to help with all the flat tires and the rest of that.
Lots of people.
Oxygen for Ray.
So the question was, do we hand out goodie bags? And we're still discussing that. We certainly anticipate that as a participant in this event, riders will get a T-shirt or some type of a merchandise, right, Claire?
Typically at our festival, we also have sponsors that kind of will set up booths and kind of like hand out giveaways, or have like, you know, samples of food or drinks, that sort of thing. So people really love getting involved in that, really adds to sort of like a community vibe with the event. And we have the exclusive beer partner, which we love, and so they would also, we'd love to bring them, we could discuss that as well, and have a van, and, yeah, probably some type of.
I'm just positive most of the restaurants, if not all, would like to put something in your goodie bag or in, in your.
Especially when they find out.
Whatever information you pass out, for specials or whatever.
That should, that should be, that's easy to do, absolutely, yep.
I think especially when they find out how many, oh, I'm sorry, trustee.
Go ahead, please.
Especially when they find out how many people do Bike to Drive, because that's going to be your pool, right?
Yeah.
We could very, I, I could very easily see this needing a max.
Well, it will have a max. It's going to have to have a max.
Yeah.
And the question is, will we hit it? That remains to be seen. I'm optimistic we will. We're still trying to calculate what the max is.
I think that gives us some flexibility in our planning, because if you say, okay, we're going to cap this at 2,000 people, and we're going to send them off at 400 a shot in five different waves, you start at 7:00, you're done by 8:30, sending them off, I think if you start at, you know, eight different waves, you start at 7:00, you're done by 8:00. Every 15 minutes, you got a wave going out, something like that.
It's, it's going to be something like that. We're, we're still meeting with some folks who have different experiences around bike racing to kind of get a better sense for how many people we can fit on the roadway at one time. But once we have a better handle on what that math looks like, we'll be able to get back to you with what we think the estimate, the max should be. We're not quite there yet.
I think.
I think it will be probably in that 2,000 to 3,000 range is, is kind of our preliminary estimate.
Do you send your elite riders out first?
Well, we have, that's, there's no final decision on that, but that is our early thinking, is that they would go out early, because they're going to be done boom like that, and we just get them out of the way. Yep.
They'll probably be done in an hour. If it's 25 miles, probably an hour.
Yeah, yeah, if it's 20, yeah, 25 would be an hour, 20 is less than an hour, yeah.
Terry will be done in an hour.
I'll take Prospect.
Yeah.
I'll tell you.
I think I mentioned to the board Saturday, we have secured all the services that we'll need from our hauler, from Allied, and we're also working with some of our new, newer businesses relative to getting all the horses and the other kinds of services that we'll need. So I think we'll be good with that so far.
Barricade capital of the US.
Pardon?
Barricade capital of the US.
That's what we're becoming, and so we're going to take advantage of it.
I think this is a great idea.
You know, when I first heard about this on Saturday, I was extremely excited about it, and the presentation this evening, I'm even more excited about it.
Thank you.
Your credentials are excellent, you've had good, good history with this, and as far as I'm concerned, I think that this would bring a lot of residents, a lot of people to our village, promote our village, and I say, go for it.
And before all the thunder is completely stolen, I'd like to say that the Bike and Run Advisory Committee, we met on March, on, uh, March 10th, and we had the opportunity to look this over beforehand, and we were very impressed, and Terry's on that committee, and Tom was one of the people involved with it as well, but we have a good committee, we're trying to bring some good biking ideas into Bartlett and change some things, and this is something we were all on board with, and so the committee is totally on board with us, so we're looking forward to it.
We'd love to work with the committee in any way that you think makes sense.
It's great.
To help plan this year.
Okay.
I just have a couple more questions, because I think the staff after these questions are going to want some kind of direction on what will determine which route, right?
I think we would like.
We, we would need to talk to the church.
Uh-huh.
Right, that's A number one. I think it's better, if it's bigger, the route, personally, I think it's better if it's bigger, because that expands the, the amount of space that you have that number of bikes out on.
Okay.
So I think it's better if it's bigger, so we'd need to talk to the church for certain.
All right.
And there's not, not a huge amount of residents in this particular contained area, so if this does go further and the board agrees on this, we can communicate with almost all of them personally, with some kind of a letter, some kind of a direction, some kind of a...
Okay.
Yeah.
You know, I can actually see this turning into a situation similar to the parades, where the people at the residents actually come out of their homes and sit, and, and sit there and watch this.
Well, that's what they do for the mayor.
These are some questions that are certainly in you guys' realm of expertise, but number one is registration and registration questions?
Sure, we would, we would handle the registration process.
All done online, I'm assuming?
Yeah, online. We register 21,000 people for MB Bike to Drive, we've got quite a bit of experience with.
Do you have a ballpark of what the fee's going to be for the race?
You mean, oh, well, we're still working on that. We're still doing some benchmarking on pricing, which is hard to do since.
Right.
Never been an event like this, but you can certainly compare it to maybe like a half marathon.
Right, 75 bucks, 80 bucks.
Your typical half marathon is in that 50 to 75, $100 range. I'm not saying we're going to charge that much, but that's one example.
I think, I think the first marathon in 90s was $45, and now it's 175 to Run Chicago. I think the last one that I have is the, the fee split. Do you guys ever split that with the volunteer organizations, or is it something you guys just survive, all the funds go into your pool and you take care of that, or?
It's certainly a fundraiser for the organization, needless to say. We've already discussed with village staff, you know, how to split up the cost, and certainly going to hold up our end of that, that bargain. We do sometimes partner with other organizations, for example, we do another bike reg called Boulevard Lakefront Tour that the Chicago Cycle Club is very active in helping us implement, and so we do share, they essentially get a small portion of the proceeds, relatively small portion of the proceeds from that, but that's probably, now, we also work with charities, so for example, a lot, a number of charities, right, Claire, come to Bike to Drive and use it as a training event, use it as a fundraising opportunity.
Yeah.
And that's great. We love to do that. In fact, I wouldn't be surprised if we get some of that happening here with Kickstand Classic, which would be awesome.
Try to walk before we run, right?
Yeah.
We start getting those tied in there.
That's first.
What we have initially negotiated in the contract is that Allied would pay 50% of our over, of our costs, primarily it will be overtime for police.
The only question I have, chief, is, I'm sorry you have to ask this question, I'm sure you're more than capable of handling this. Do you have any concerns that this is going to be a problem, or?
It'll be a fun and exciting challenge, and we're confident we'll pull it off, and we call it the Bartlet Way. It'll be a very positive experience.
My final, my final question or comment is, anybody that runs these events continually, and I've probably done 100 different road races, you always go back, if they feed you well at the end and the party's fun at the end. That is the key to these type of deals, you know?
Really helps.
If the thing at the end is kind of a bummer, you did, you got up in the morning and you rode your bike and you just did it, and nobody's really having fun at the end. So that's going to be key. If we, we got to really make sure that that deal at the end is a lot of fun.
I think, you know, our.
And I think there are businesses downtown here that really might want to get plugged into that, so.
Exciting. I think our team, Karen, Rachel, and we have other folks that work on this event are really, really good at making our events fun. If you've ever been to Bike to Drive, you know we have a great festival there. In fact, we, we're going to extend some complimentary entries for MB Bike to Drive to the village. Would love for you to come down. It's the Sunday of Memorial Day weekend, May 29th, yep, so you can kind of get a sense for what our events look like. Needless to say, that one's going to be larger scale.
Yeah.
Than what we're planning here, but still, I think it's a good indication of what we can do.
Okay.
Let's move it on.
So, yeah, it sounds like the board is definitely in favor of this, so you, you have the input that you need, and we're ready to move forward.
We certainly do, thank you.
Thank you, and sort of thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, ladies.
Mr. President, that's all we have on planning and zoning tonight.
Thank you, trustee Ranky. Just one last comment, I think that we had talked about this in strategic planning, but I think it's important to say it here, because I think that this would be a great opportunity for the village to be bringing this type of a new, brand-new, picturesque event into Bartlett and have that many potential new people that have never seen downtown Bartlett see it again.